Welcome to the council meeting of Ararat Rural City. It's 90th past 2019. Live stream, the councillors keen to engage with members of the committee. And now live streams the format council meets to make them accessible. The signal will be available to view on Ararat Rural City Council's Facebook page from 6pm and on council's website www ararat.vic.gov.au from Wednesday morning following the council meeting. You do not require a Facebook account to watch live broadcast. Simply enter www.facebook.com/aratruralcitycouncil into your address bar. We stand.
We acknowledge the traditional owners of the land in which we meet today and pay our respects to the elders, past, present and emerging.
Almighty God, we humbly ask you to help us as elected councillors of the Ararat Rural City Council. Guide our deliberation. Prosperity is yours for us, to your honour and glory and for the welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in the Ararat Rural City.
Councillor's pledge. We will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interests of the people of the municipal district of the Ararat Rural City Council and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discussions vested in us under the Local Government Act 1989 or any other act to the best of our skills and judgement.
I now wish to make some comments before we commence the full meeting. On behalf of Ararat Rural City Council, we wish to extend our sympathies to the families, friends and faith communities affected by the shootings in Christchurch last Friday. We have a large Islamic community and also a large New Zealander community within our town. The hurt from this census act is great and extends far beyond those families and communities directly affected. It hurts us all, it diminishes us all and in some way it changes the world for us all. The thought of people being murdered whilst at worship is repugnant through fair-minded people everywhere and greatly saddens us. Our local Islamic community is very important to us. They are part of Ararat Rural City. They are our friends, neighbours and workmates. I offer my sympathy, concern and ongoing support to them over the next few days, weeks and months as they begin to recover from this terrible act. Ararat Rural City is a culturally inclusive committee. We welcome people from across the world and we will stand by our Islamic community during this time. Ararat Rural City truly values our capacity to welcome people from across the world regardless of culture or religion. This is a time that we need to demonstrate this in a very clear way to our community. I also wish to acknowledge the passing of a staff member, Brian Ken, who served the council for 17 years and died far too young. I would also like to, on a much more pleasant note, welcome Veronica Schilling, the manager planning the community compliance that's mouthfully for the Arabors one, to the Ararat Rural City. I hope you enjoy your time with us. Are there any apologies? I don't think so. Confirmation of the minutes that have been made and held on the 90th of February 2019. Councillor Armstrong, second Councillor Brathwaite. Is there any discussion in relation to the minutes? If not, no question. All those in favour? Against? Are there any declarations of interest? Councillor Deutsch and Councillor Oliver, if you will, submit. Any other declarations of the culture of interest? Are there any matters of urgent business? Request to address council? Obviously people can make comments and address council without notices. There's no one in the gallery yet. I'll go to the next section. Declarations and presentations? None? Petitions?
We do have petitions, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
A petition in relation to conditions at Bowman Road, Leinspringen Road, Bolton Road, Lock Road, Morgan Road, Wild Lane and White Patch Road in the surrounding west suburbs received at the London table at the 6th and 8th April 2019.
Someone move that? Councillor Oliver? Councillor Deutsch? Is anyone here to speak?
Just to make a comment on being very worried for a long time with the conditions of Wild Lane and if the other roads were in a similar condition, I can see the thoughts with the petitions.
Councillor Brathwaite?
Yeah, just the concern about the fact that they've contacted and been disappointed about the lack of response from our officers.
Anyone else who should speak? Councillor Oliver?
This has always been really, really important when there's been fires out in that area because there are a lot of the roads there that are being used. So it's really important that it be done and it's great to see that it's come up at last and a lot of people bear it.
Want to point out for anyone watching the fact that there's not a decision this month.
Right on time.
The motion, I think it was passed. So yeah. Petition run the street?
It's right, petition of the road and the total. Last council meeting, Mr Mayor, related to run the corner of Runwell and North Straits, particularly Runwell Street, which is unsealed at this point in time. It's a short section of road and I'm concerned it's long. Significant dust in that street, which is causing concern for residents. Also, that's probably the noise due to bad traffic and more trucks steering by on that road. GWM Water have a standpipe and a operating depot. As well, it's a problem. The recommendation that I've been having spoken to the Councillor says the major infrastructure and the total cost of the project included drainage will be between $100,000 and $10,000. My suggestion would be the council consider that now for sealing that road, a short section of road, but also to seek a 30% contribution from GWM Water where it's undertaken in recognition of the fact that the significant amount of dust and noise on that road is caused by their vehicular traffic to their depot in that space.
Is there not also a contribution from the other road pass in the road? When we made the road for the first time?
It's an existing jam road.
Yeah, but when making the road sealed for the first time, normally there's a contribution. Everybody on that road.
I believe we've actually had, probably had a very hard task of taking roads from gravel to seal state community areas and required a contribution for it. In our last council meeting, we agreed to seal a section of road. There's no contribution required from road pass in that case. The contribution was sourced from GWM Water in this case because they do have significant truck traffic in that section of street that does cause significant dust and noise pollution. They've actually challenged the access to their depot side as well through Runwell Street as we speak off North Street. So it's increased the nuisance to the residents in that space. If I shy away from it.
Just to comment, I think there was a time when the council required the contribution of Currie and Chelmsford. That might have still stood out, so I don't understand.
Maybe we ought to check that out.
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, I noticed that there are several other businesses in the area that have access from there and they're not being asked to make a contribution. Was it only because of the increased access from GWM?
Yeah, the significant traffic wanted to do with GWM Water's operation at that depot. The standpipe gets considered use and actually water truck traffic is also there as well, Mr Mayor. I'm happy the council will decide not to issue contributions to that as a petition of protest.
There are two residences in the streets. I see housing conflict between commercial, industrial and business.
There are also some residences across North Street who are affected by the dust as well. The reality is I don't know where...
It's a bit hard when you haven't got a plan in front of you. This entrance here is to say... The only time I've ever seen water trucks filling has been there, which is not opposite any of the two actual residents that are in there.
No, I think it's where they accessed.
They come in like that, just there, they don't come out there.
I spoke to the residents on that side and I think that they said there was a changing pattern of truck use there.
Councillor Armstrong?
I had just a question regarding whether hedging or plant screening has been considered as a possible method to alleviate the dust transfer onto residents' properties?
Hasn't been said, no. It was a very short section of road. So that was the service end of the obvious issue there, the money issue.
And approximately how long ago did GWM alter their habit of access?
I'd like to check that. That was just an observation over the notice.
Right, that's their observation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could we look at maybe just putting an emulsion mix into the road like a dust suppressant into the existing state gravel, but it would be a lot cheaper?
That could actually be considered.
So the question really is... It's not a question I've found a few months ago. How long would that last if we were doing the dust suppression option?
Mr Mayor, I was wondering whether, given the discussion that has been had among the councillors, that we might defer this issue till next?
Well, I don't have anything to say, it's a... I won't speak. This has been an issue for a very long time and there's not only GWM Water. This area is actually used for part of the industrial state as well. So there's an awful lot of traffic down there. And the problem is that there's businesses on one side and private houses on the other and it is very dusty. I've been there two or three times and I thought this was a great resolution if we want to follow it through. But it'd be really interesting to go and talk to them. But I know it's been an ongoing issue for a long, long time and the drought's not helping anybody with the dust. And they've got a high fence. So nothing's fixed, just the process. They keep the dust there.
Councillor Deutsch?
I should like to mention that the recommendation by our officers is that we approve the $110,000 for a seek 30% recovery from GWM. So that's what I would like to see happening.
If we don't get the money, we don't do the job for you.
Well, that's the question to ask. If we don't get the contribution and it's not compulsory, do we still do the job?
I think that we may already consider during the budget process. We've approached GWM Water about a contribution since the resolution was passed. If that's the case, we can hear that we may consider the whole job department that brought the budget process. I think at our expense.
I'm in your hands. If someone can move the motion in a second and we can discuss it or we can have a journey for a month?
Well, maybe move the motion.
Move, Councillor Oliver? In a second, Councillor Brathwaite? Who should speak to it?
Now, I think that it explains what's going to happen and if we don't get that 30%, we'll have to rethink.
Councillor Brathwaite?
I think there's a need to have it done. We should do it properly and do it so that it's a final solution. And I think we should go with the recommendation.
Councillor Armstrong?
I believe that the recommendation highlights not just the road sealing, but also it's important that it does acknowledge an improvement to the drainage works and installation and replacement of cullets to existing properties. So it's actually, it's not a simple matter of just sealing a dusty road. It's an improvement to the infrastructure in that part of town and I think that it's important to be mindful of the relationship between residents and those businesses in an industrial area. And there's always going to be conflict if we allow there to be conflict. But if we can find and agree upon a solution that's going to manage that, then we're going to have happy neighbours across our road pass sectors.
Anyone else who should speak to it against the motion? I'll be speaking against the motion. I actually have no issue with doing the job. I do have issues with the fact that we haven't spoken to the other businesses who are substantial users of wood, secondhand materials, places like Mr Goldman. And the other squares. The two houses that get most of the dust off, so they actually don't have the front fence. So the dust isn't stopped mainly at the corner house. That's a bit of a protection, but the rest of them don't. The fact that if I was Goldman, I'd say, "Goldman and Wood?"
Grantins?
Grantins?
Whimmer?
Yes. If I was the board of board, I would be saying, "No", until the upper paper in the scheme. I'd rather break their agenda until next month. No, before then. Councillor Oliver?
Yes, I'd just like to sum up. Two says seeks a 30% cost contribution from GWM Water to the works and undertaking recognition of the impact of the water truck to their depot and resident amenity. To me, that is saying, if we don't get the 30% from GWM Water, we won't be doing the job. And I think that's going to be a long and protracted negotiation. So I'm happy with the recommendation as it stands.
I put the recommendations as bait and it's been close. All those in favour? All those against? The motion's carried. Delegation of councillors to amend to section 86, please. That be it?
Council delegations and authorisations are done, updated twice a year. The first one is the delegation from council to the council staff. So the major changes in this one is just a few organisational changes along with minor sections to the planning environment.
Councillors, read the delegations. Nobody's all about it. Is anyone willing to move the motion? Councillor Brathwaite, Councillor Armstrong? Anyone who should speak to it? If not, the motion, all those in favour? Against? Right. Sorry. 3.2, again.
The second one's the appointment and authorisation of some of the Planning Environment Act 1987 and changes are just slight changes to the act and organisational changes.
It's recommendation there, councillors. Anyone got any questions first? If not, there's a recommendation. Move, Councillor Oliver? Second, Councillor Deutsch? Who should speak to it? Not on foot, the motion, those in favour? Against, that's passed. It's called a new car left, on relocation.
I actually have the claim of interest in this one. Mr Mayor, I'm the chairperson of the Greenhill Lake Development Report, which is mentioned in the report.
I have some interesting caravan parks. Could you shut the door when you go, please, Mr Mayor? Thank you.
There's one of our more exciting items, the location dump point. Carried it's located near Ararat, right in the skate park. It's not a very appropriate location. We've got a very disheartening people using appropriate super wide and we've got a caravan dump point where we're dumping house garbage and oxus waste into in the very acidity. So I suppose there's an interest to sit up shifting that dump point. I usually don't like options in papers which actually make you a recommendation. In this case, I've been a bit weak with the side of options here to be considered or to add to our recommendation. First one is the Gomisand car park. This is probably not an ideal location if we have to enhance the use of Gomisand and it allows it to have a significant tourist attraction in the town. So again, that dump point there would not be a terribly appropriate option, but certainly it's not only got space and access to sewer to put that dump point in. The approximate cost is about $5,000 for removing this collection of dump points at that location. The second one's Kokoda Park. Again, Kokoda Park is a recreation space in the municipality. It is close to sewer and we need to improve disembrated river work there too, which really costs that to about $8,000 for relocation of that space. It would limit our options for using Kokoda Park rather than passive recreational activities, walking and so on. So it's a... That's again, that's probably not an ideal location in the town. The third one's Greenhill Lake on the Western Highway. The problem with this is the proximity to, the proximity to sewer, that location. We actually have to use the existing septic system there, which we've just upgraded, but it could in many times lead to the need to pump that septic system out more regularly than we currently do. And the cost of that's about $5,000. So I guess the recommendation that we've made there is that we, that council does remove the dump point from Isaiah Avenue, give us approximately the skate park and access to the other government space and that we relocate the dump point to the highway because it's a problem to be there site. I think three movements there.
Councillor Brathwaite, you have a question?
Yeah, I agree with the need to relocate the facility, but this is a very important thing for our town. It brings a lot of business to town. Having a dump site in the town, as I say, while people are...
Is there a question?
Yeah, there is. And I think that because it's located in the town, that the second option, Kokoda Park, is the better option.
That's the option in the CEO.
Well, Mr Mayor, is Councillor Brathwaite going to amend the recommendation? I'm happy to move the recommended recommendation.
Well, at this stage, I'm wondering if I should ask any questions to the CEO because I've got some questions.
Well, I suppose the problem is that the size of this proximity residential housing there as well and in Golden Street. I take the point that does route the dump point into town. There's probably some argument about proximity of dump points to town. We wouldn't have one, but as well, we've got two in caravan parks. We think in close proximity as well, but they've got to be used by caravan park residents or tenants. So this would be... The Kokoda Park, I guess, has a disadvantage of being close to residential property and it's also, it's a vice cross option, it's a costly issue as well.
Are there any other questions, Councillor?
Just wondering if we don't have a septic at Greenhill Lake and we've got to empty it all the time. So the big cost likely would be...
We're not sure at this stage of the impact would be, Councillor, until we actually started using that septic. We have improved the system in recent times so that we wouldn't have to pump as regularly as we had to previously, would have had to previously because we've got a larger capacity system and a better septic system in that space. I can't answer exactly how we have to pump the system.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. That was the question I was going to ask. I am concerned with that. So I'm in your hands, Councillor Oliver.
Is the motion?
Councillor Oliver, move the motion to a second, Councillor Armstrong? Anyone who should just... Oh, sorry. Say it first?
I've considered this very carefully and I've taken on the comments by the CEO. And I also consider the fact that by having it out of town, it does, as Councillor Armstrong said, perhaps mitigate against people going to the CBD and using things there. However, I think that is offset by the fact that if people have to go out to Greenhill Lake to use the dump point, it may encourage them to actually stay there rather than just passing through the town and using the dump point on the way. So I feel that the, having it at the caravan park is not only good for the people who use the park, but it also can still attract people into our CBD.
Thank you, Councillor Armstrong.
Thank you very much, ECHO. Your comments, Councillor, held that was in fact the point that I was keen to make, that there is an opportunity to attract return visitors to Greenhill Lake. We may well find that we have patronage out there at a dump point that we wouldn't have received otherwise. And I think it's certainly, there's an opportunity for improved services around the Greenhill Lake. This is a step, I believe, in the right direction. And who knows what the future of the Kokoda Park area might bring? I wouldn't like to see this being a barrier to any opportunity to develop that part of town further or for there to be other business opportunity or community opportunity for recreation, whatever it might be. We don't know yet at this point. But Greenhill Lake is matching, in my mind, that option is matching like with like. So I'm very much in favour of the third option, Greenhill Lake.
I don't support that. I still believe that Kokoda Park, a small portion of Kokoda Park could be annexed for this and that the value of having the dump point close to the CBD is a point that needs to be considered. I would also be concerned about the fact that there are concerns about the existing septic system at Greenhill Lake, even though it's been upgraded, and the volume of material being dumped there and the potential for it to leak and leak into the lake. So I don't support it, I'll be going again.
Councillor Pedden? Anything else to say? Well, I certainly don't support Greenhill Lake, but if it's Kokoda Park, I'd have to support Greenhill Lake. I think Kokoda Park is the wrong location, even with the potential roadworks coming from Pyrenees Highway and all that. I don't think we need to have people coming into the town like they do now. It's got to be on the main road, the location. I do prefer Gum Sand on the grounds of the sewage. I think Councillor Brathwaite's right about the potential of the septic system there not being able to cope with it because it's a fairly heavily used facility, dump point. That's all I've got to say. So I'm happy to support, Councillor Brathwaite.
Well, given your comments, I would support the Gum Sand side. I believe that we could...
We have a motion for a resimment, so that's the one we've got to vote on. Councillor Oliver?
Yes, Mr Mayor. I understand the feeling about Kokoda Park and Gum Sand. They were originally the ones that I thought would be better. Having said that, there is going to be a change to the highway, eventually now the fact that there will be a bypass. Greenhill Lake will be closer to the exit from the... To Ararat, bypass in other words. So I think if there is signage on the highway that says that we offer a dump point into the town, people who might bypass Ararat along the highway may be more encouraged to come in. And having done that, I accept the issues with the septic system. It's something that we can look at in the future if there is an issue with that. But I think at this point in time, both Kokoda Park and Gum Sand car park have issues that don't fit suit of mine.
Thank you. So the motion's been moved, the second and closed. Put the motion, all those in favour? Those against? The motion's carried. You agree?
All the evidence in the fight is out.
Councillors, the recommendations, Mr Kennedy?
Thank you.
3.48?
Thanks, Mr Pedden. At the last council assembly, we spoke about the proposed advocacy issues for all coming in that was identifying their streptococcus pipeline, the Western Highway relocation, Ararat bypass, Ararat Rural mountain bike track, Ararat East development zone, the town tract to a terminal and the new Lindsay development and also housing as the key issues for advocacy during our period. And to the ICA, we recommend the council adopt those as our key advocacy issues for strategy this year to move forward with. And I guess alongside that, there's a need for some allocation of budget in the 2029 and 2020 budget to carry that forward in a proper manner. And the first element there is a development advocacy collateral. That is about $75,000. Oh, sorry. $75,000, sorry, $75,500. I'll try it again.
Lovely, lovely.
To develop advocacy collateral. That is, I guess, printed material and we're trying to show that we use as part of advocacy campaign. My heart's still beating strong, $75,000. And then the second part is engagement of professional lobbyists assisting in this process. That's $20,000 that obviously we advocate there. But that may seem like a luxury item for us at this point in time. I still think that if we're really serious about those key issues, that some of those will require some political work being done and that's best done by professional lobbyists, professional political operators, political agents in that space. We can advocate in the way we do, but there are times when we actually need to actually punch through. to actually punch through that space. Those people who are connected and know the right spaces, the right doors and are going to provide us the power, we need to connect within that space. And $20,000, I've got to say, is not a huge spend in our lobbying space. Although I think we need to begin to commit to that if we want to ensure those outcomes. Some of those were raised by the Eskerankins Pipeline. That scenario, we need some professional lobbyists to get the $30 million from the Commonwealth across the line. But arrange for those other elements of things that we need to work hard around because it will be political focus around each and every one of those options. I just think one of those advocacy issues that we need to work, work through. So my recommendation is that we identify, follow those issues, Eskerankin Pipeline, Western Highway duplication, air bypass, Arid Hills mountain bike track, Arid East Development Zone, the tunnel tract to a terminal, redevelopment and housing is out, issues for advocacy in the forthcoming 12 months. And also the $27,500 in total from the budget, being $7,500 for the development of print electronic collateral and $20,000 for professional lobbyists.
Any questions, please? I've got one. The fact that we budget, that doesn't issue any, we will speak...
That doesn't ever go to stand, Mr. Mayor.
And we will be obviously lobbying on other issues. We're not locked just into these. Once we've identified as our key ones and we're still going to have that supported up.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think the other ones we're going to develop that collateral package around, those are the key issues we identified, the big tip and things, will be a whole range of other things, probably 10, 20, 30, 50, who knows how many that will be lobbying and pushing and advocating for during that period as well. But those are the key issues, I guess, that we need to lock down for the forthcoming 12 months as targets for ourselves.
Counselor Hall?
No, I was keen to move the motion.
Well, you can do, or something, Counselor Hall, or something, the segment, but Counselor Braithwaite, do you wish to speak?
Lobbying is essential to getting the funding required for projects that make this municipality a great place to be. Lobbyists have access to decision makers that we as councillors and staff don't have. The key advocacy issues outlined, I think, are extremely important for our economic growth, the livability of the municipality, just not now, but into the future. I look forward to this advocacy being successful, hopefully with the employment of these consultants, and for staff to be able to implement these projects, among others, that may come along the way.
Anyone else wish to speak, Counselor?
I'd echo those sentiments. I think that the list represents those things that adhere to our hearts with the council and the community. And I think that the spend is not huge and appropriate in the case.
Counselor Armstrong?
Thank you. I believe that the comment in the report about risk assessment is really relevant. We, we would be taking a really bad risk move if we weren't to support this motion, I believe, because this is an investment in our future prosperity and the economic opportunity across our wider region. And it's very, very important that we do the very best we can with the resources we have to do it properly.
Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that I've been part of the lobbying groups when we've gone down there with regional toppings and they really haven't worked because our voice hasn't been heard. We've actually worked in with other people. And when it comes to our, the likes of Valerac just loves to use our population, but the money never comes through those gates. And that's a tragedy of, we need to get out there on our own and say what we need because I think that's the, the whole purpose of this motion and I fully support it and I think that the money would be well spent. I know the last time we went to Canberra, it was hardly a thing on our front. It was really disappointing. And we're spending that sort of money and we're not getting anything out of it. And I, I think that this is the way to go.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Just one small comment, really. Is there a possibility or chance that councillors lobby with the lobbyists?
Well, I'll explain that until it's over, I'll make that comment. The lobbyists only get us in the door. They know who are relevant for whatever we're lobbying for. It's for the councillors and the staff to go to these meetings and do the lobbying. Lobbyists don't do the lobbying.
Thank you.
They're more like the key to a door. And then we have to step through that door to put our cancers. And Counselor Hall is correct. If there's 16 people trying to get through the door, you who haven't been the person with the key don't get in. Does anyone else wish to speak? If not, wish to close?
I think I just endorse, I'm everyone has said.
All those in favor? Against parts? In the motion, of course. Those councillors playing?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just one more crack at the council plan. We've just, because the information report has come around, so the councillors have one last look. I've already had a couple of comments from some councillors today that's changed my mind. So the next time we see this will probably be briefly, briefly, beginning of April, moving towards the April council meeting for endorsement of the council plan and the, and the four year resources plan is associated with that as well. So I guess we are trying to, from all this here, we've got the council plan, which is the four year plan. We've got the snapshot we've provided, which is the brief document. These are all included in the, in the appendices, the, the agenda. And also the annual work plans will form the basis of our workers' offices for that 12 month period to implement the plan. I'll just, for information, it's one last attempt for councillors to come forward with some more commentary about that. And all comments are welcome, but we've only got enough to go right now, so.
Any questions?
I did ring the CEO today and ask if we were going to have a section for use because I couldn't see a great deal in there. And I've been told that yes, that will be a focus of the next document, so I'm happy with that.
Counselor Hall?
Yeah, Dr. Hoshin, councils are sort of required to have a 10 year council plan, I suppose. Are we working on that at all?
But that, that's a, there's a, there's a resources plan, it's a four year plan, isn't it?
Yes.
But we are producing ourselves a 10 year financial strategy and a capital works program which will be coming to the April meeting.
Thank you for that. We're doing more than we require.
Question? As alluded to by the CEO, this is the first draft, I suppose you could say, of the document. And I think that it's excellent that it's here now. But when the budget documents come out from the April meeting, then there will be a period of community consultation before it's adopted.
I'm just trying to get, so if I, it is just, we're just taking every opportunity, council, every last minute to make commentary on that, because it's your plan. This is council, one of the, pleasure to council, to pull in terms of the direction of the organisation and the way we work with our residents and residents and communities. So I just want to make sure that you've got every opportunity before we go anywhere else to make your plan.
Is there a recommendation, anyone who wants to move it? I mean, so Hall from Counselor George, anyone who's to speak for, yes?
Um, I did sit down today and read it thoroughly, so some wouldn't listen if they actually written down the comments I wanted to make. This is without a doubt the best set out council plan that I have seen. This plan clearly sets out a strategic direction set by councillors. The format of the plan is concise, then it's comprehensive and easy to follow. First 11 pages are concise and colorful snapshot. The next section of the plan sets out the priorities determined by councillors. And the final section is the action plan, and it is just that, setting out the work CEO and staff undertake to meet the objectives set by councillors and the funds required for implementation. I've reiterated what I've said here, the percentage of components of budget process at your council meeting. But I do recommend to the citizens, it's good news, but if you want to know what your council is doing and for the benefits of the citizens, take time to read the document. It's available online, I gather, on the council website. And provide feedback or ask questions. You'll get a far better understanding and appreciation of how council sets and implements its strategic direction by going through this document. So I recommend it to everyone.
Thank you. She's closed, the paper.
Sorry, that's gone.
All those in favor? Against parts? Building approvals? Anyone with a good read for those?
Somebody for the lead answers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. And the old one, the segment? Counselor Hall?
Not just most, uh, negative comments. I don't know what happened to you, but I can't believe that these have been approved so quickly. If you look at the dates, they've come in. It's just amazing and it's really great as a councillor seeing that we can turn this around because this has been, one of our biggest complaints has been that with planning, it drags on and on and on and on and on. And this goes to show how on the ball we are now. So I'd like to go, which I didn't want to.
My mistake, Counselor.
Well, these are actually building approvals, not planning approvals.
Sorry.
But it's great to see $1.3 million worth of, of development activity and a total of another 270, so.
That's a great job. That's a good year. And I must agree with Counselor, whether it's building or planning, things are done quickly, it always reflects well on the organisation. Uh, there's recommendations to move. Counselor Armstrong, Counselor George, anyone who's to speak to it? Or if not, put the last, that in favor, it's part. And the delegation. There's a recommendation there, and I think the same comments have been made before, could probably be stamped. Move from Counselor Hall, segment. Counselor Alvin, anyone who's to speak? I've put the motion on those in favor, and it's a pass. Any minutes? Any questions? Any questions for this? Counselor Alvin?
Um, can you give me the recommendation, if I just want to comment?
After you've moved for a minute, is there a segment? Counselor Armstrong?
I'd love this one, who's the second? Councillor needs to be aware of the issues raised in the meetings and take action where required, not preserving the meetings in a timely manner can lead to delays in implementation of requests because we need to agree and it's really important to the people sitting around those tables and making those decisions that we take on board what they are talking about and work with them.
Anyone else wish to make comment? If not, I put the motion on those in favor, against parts? Advice for judges? Anyone who's to, move the, the next call, segment, Counselor Armstrong, anyone who's to speak? If not, I've put the motion on those in favor, against parts? Assembly of councillors? There's recommendations there, someone move it? Counselor Alvin? Counselor Hall? Anyone who's to speak to it?
So a couple of things I'd like to highlight that were actually in there, that, for instance, Will Dickerson has been talking about having grade six swimming program for years and he's finally got it on the agenda for all state schools, which is great. May not be able to afford to be happy. And the other thing is I'd just like to mention, so I do keep continuing to mention the service station that needs to be cleaned up near the Astor Theatre. And also, 12th of March, the jail ward's opening with the 25th anniversary and the rail signs down at the highway haven't been replaced. And that's one that I quite often get pointed out to me it's not done. And I was just wondering if we're going to have an update tonight on the fountain at the front of the town hall? That's possible? Where we're at?
It's not on the agenda at the present moment.
I realise it's not, but I just think people will ask it.
Oh, yeah, so the senators of councillors have been moved and sent. Anyone else wish to speak to the assembly of documents? If not, I'll put the motion on those in favor, against parts? Councillor's reports. Before we go into this, maybe we should have the CEO's report. Issues like that could be addressed in advance, so the CEO, councillor can speak to the senate, can you address this? I don't have to do that. But at present, our council reports are going to the way.
I'm warning you, Mr. Mayor, I didn't make any reports at the last meeting, so you're going to get full bore of this meeting. So be careful. On March the 1st, I attended the GCW, which is the Grand Prince Central West Waste Recovery, something or other, committee, it's mouthful. For the first time since its inception, the forum had a wide ranging diversity input into updating CWI, GCW operating guidelines. The forum chair was extremely pleased with the result and they now have a revised set of guidelines. There are many issues covered. One of them was the need for collection of data because 12 councils belong to this forum. And each council has different methods of collecting their data and it's very difficult for them to act on behalf of all councils if they don't have data that they can use. So that's something that's being looked into. There was a very strong push for a glass deposit stream, which has been going on forever and we're fingers crossed. And the Valerac City Council at present explained the benefits of their proposed waste to energy facility, which is something they've been working on for a while. I think it's something like $500 million, so I wish them luck with that, that project. In the actual report to the forum by the administrative staff, they outlined 19 activities that were being undertaken by them. Out of those 19, of a special interest to us was of seven councils affected by closure of recycling committees. Two have found alternative options and five are either storing or landfilling, which is a very disturbing state of affairs. So we look forward to some sort of resolution of that situation. A 63,500 shared funding application has been put in, has been submitted by the group to fund consultants for a collective procurement project covering landfill, recycling, organics collection and recycling organics processing. Of the regional projects listed, the Lake Bolak transfer station was mentioned, so we got coverage during that forum, which is a full day of activities on Monday. On March 3rd, I went to the Walora Market, it is always a delight to attend and a prime example of the work volunteers do to make their communities vibrant and entice visitors to Walora, very successful day. March the 8th was International Women's Day and that was beginning this, the likely event soon. In the morning, I went to a CFA hosted event and it was remarkable first for the address given by Jenny Beals, and I won't mention who she's connected with, from the Primary Care Partnership. And she did a great job of linking the Black Saturday bushfires and the effect on and the roles that women play in those situations. After the address, we had the opportunity to tour the new CFA headquarters and I was blown by the immense benefit this facility has for this region. I have to confess, but I didn't realise until I went there that it was a regional facility. And the, what they have built and built into that, I now understand why it's such a big building because it is just remarkable. And it is a great facility to have within our municipality. I then went to the event hosted by the Hopkins Correctional Centre. And the last time I'd been to the centre was quite some time ago and I couldn't get over how long it was, so it was a very old jar last time I went there. Far better this time. That event was a pleasure to end and the guest speaker, ABC journalist and statewide host personally, Dick Rose, was an absolute highlight. She spoke on the journey of women from earlier times to today and she held her audience enthralled and you only realised afterward just how long she talked for. She, she actually held her audience very well. Her final message to women, I'll pass it on to all the women here, is don't hesitate to ask for a rise and don't hesitate to ask for a promotion, even if you're on part time work, so the effort was fairly concerned. So she had some pretty good, and what has even been, she managed to do all of that without alienating any men prisoners. A real achievement on a, a discussion about women. The next event I attended was on Sunday, which was the Atlantic Centre Open Day. And after attending that day, I appreciate why they are working towards a new community centre because their current premises are pretty primitive and small and they're doing a great job to work from it. We look forward to when they have their new, excuse me, centre. We look forward to when they have their new, excuse me, centre. I arrived shortly after ten, and I didn't leave until an hour and a half later. I arrived thinking I understood how the Islamic faith worked, and I didn't. The woman, there were two women present, one from Melbourne. She's a very highly qualified person, PhD, university lecturer. And she held us enthralled. They provided us with delicious food, which is just a sort of offside of the thing. I discovered that Muslim women have far more rights than overthought, and it's quite obvious that I had it come across before, but there are many occasions where the woman is the boss of the house and not the man, which is contrary to a lot of concepts, particularly in the case of the people there. Asher, I think I made up her name wrong, so I apologise if I do. But she had me spellbound as she explained the Muslim faith to me. And as I said, it took about an hour and a half. I was the first one to sit down and ask questions. Everybody else was very good, and they lived on the mat. I didn't, I didn't think I'd get up again if I did. But by the time I left, which I said was an hour and a half later, she had a room full of women, and she had them absolutely enthralled. So as an opportunity to find out how the Islamic faith works, it was brilliant. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. That's broken.
Yes, just a couple of things to highlight. I attended the Promoter Hall Committee meeting earlier this month, and that's a fantastic committee, that. And highlight the fact that they participated last year in the Small Halls Festival across Australia, and had a very successful day. And it's on again this week, Thursday, from 6:30 till 10pm. And I'll be going. It's a fantastic, small, concise little festival. You'll be able to get homemade lamb kebabs and homemade lamb pita breads.
Great for events.
Yeah, they've got it sorted, so if you've got time, that's a great thing to attend.
They have very good international music, there?
Yes, yes, there'll be international music, there'll be other things. It's a whole community event. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the audit committee we had earlier this month. And it became apparent to me that we're going to lose at the end of this year two external members who have a great experience and great knowledge of being on a committee, because our charter says that they can only serve for two, three-year terms. And I'd like to say that if we lose, those two members will be greatly disadvantaged. And I would like to think that we could look at the charter to amend it to, say, three terms.
Anything else, councillor? Councillor Hall?
Mr. Mayor, I was on the audit committee when those two people were put on the committee, and I've endorsed everything that councillor Braythwaite has to say. They've been excellent members of the group.
Thank you. Nothing else against the breakthrough? The councillor comes through?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty-seventh of February, I'm going to September, not quite sure when. Twenty-seventh of February, I joined a delegation with Mayor Kevin Owen from Northern Grahamshire and councillor David Grimble from Horsham Royal City Council. And as our respective council representatives on the Western Highway Action Committee, we formed a delegation to visit the Minister for Transport and Infrastructure, Jacenter Allen. And we were indeed lobbying, we were seeking funding for pre-construction works for Section Three of the Western Highway duplication to connect Arat and Store. So we're certainly keeping that topic front and foremost. On the first of March, I had the pleasure of attending AC News's second anniversary. AC News is the journalism unit at Arat Community College, and on that day, they launched their website. It is just terrific. It's, what impressed me is the depth of information they have there. It goes through archives of previous news stories that they have run over other media platforms. It's a really quality result from those students who are working from year seven through to ten, and I just applaud the work they've done, it's terrific. They're very ably supported by staff members who are really dedicated. Like councillor Hull and other councillors here, I know, I attended the Wallora Market earlier this month. Sixth of March, I attended the Women of Field Days in lieu of the mayor who was unable to make it. And there I was at a whole discussion with committee of management members of the field days, but also mayors and councillors from Horsham City, Northern Grahamshire, and Yarra Ambiath Councils. Eighth of March, I too attended the International Women's Day's events at the CFA and the Hopkins Correctional Centre, which, that event at the outer of the prison was auspiced again by the Arat Community Interface Group. And yeah, both of those events are focused on the communities of respect and equality of which council is a member. On the ninth of March, I had the honour of opening up Sarah Water's solo exhibition at Tamar. And that exhibition's entitled Going Round in Squares. It's a great, I just, it really, I said on the day, it really appeals to me, Going Round in Squares, it just seems to really ring true. And a couple of my favourite works from that, and I really encourage people to go and have a look, there's great humour there, as well as terrific depth of meaning. But go and have a look at Wellwell, and the other one was A Stumped Embrace, and you might work out why I think they're particularly appealing. And then just this Sunday, it was very important to me to attend the Islamic Welfare Centre of Arat's Open Day. I think the timeliness after the awful tragedy of the Christchurch shooting on Friday made it incredibly timely, and yes, councillor Hull, spending time with Ravina and Ansha was so enlightening, and we talked about so very many different things. It really was a really enjoyable opportunity to spend time getting to know members of our community a little bit better in a very, very welcoming environment. I'm looking forward to the celebration dinner at the end of this week, for a multicultural week. Thank you.
It's like all the community, the like all the complex committee, we have an ongoing consultation. That's Dr. Harrison, myself, under the committee. Lots has been achieved in the last month or thereabouts, but it's continuing. The Lake Bolak Recreation, the Memorial Hall, not much action, it's happened there in the last year and a half thereabouts. And I attended that meeting, and the Make Life Recreation Reserve, and we invited all the members to the pub in Lake Bolak and the Centre for IAP, so something to look forward to. That's about it from me.
Thank you.
Yes, on the sixteenth of March, I attended the J. Hottles Rock Festival in the street. That was terrific, just to see all the old cars and talk to the son. He's nearly two, and he loves cars now, so we had really good days, and it was terrific. Well, moving on.
Thank you. Councillor Hall?
Yes, just some of the things that have already been mentioned. I went to Danden to see if I, I now realise what my husband's talking about when he disappears down there for hours at a time. I also visited the Islamic community as well, and was almost introduced to my son. They understood that the family's got a bit of history there. The Alexander Hall Committee, I attended their meetings, and they're travelling along very well. They seem to be able to manage beautifully around there, which is great. The church service for International Women's Day, I attended at the Catholic Church, which was a really nice service. The other one was the Jailhouse Rock. I also attended on Saturday morning the Jailhouse Rock, and they did an excellent job. They're a very small committee, but I was very impressed with what they had there in the attractions and what the Performing Huts or the town hall had at the front of it as well. It was, you know, great from any angle, didn't it? Really looked like it was full, and very vibrant. And we like to, and we're not stalking, but we like to look at the night in the main street, and to be in the main street and see the amount of people who walk to the venues. You don't see a lot of cars outside them, so you drive past and think, oh, nobody there, you know? But they walk there with their rescues, and they walk home. And the motels were absolutely buzzing, and that's what we want. We want that outside dollar to come in, so that was very important, I thought, after the weekend, to have so many people actually staying in the area. They're here Friday, and they'll still be Sunday morning, so I think that's great. So it's not done yet because a lot of young ones are all in the world, wasn't it? Well, the young people like to be learning the dances, I'd describe to you. Thank you.
That's all. Right, thank you. All right, so the twenty-second of February, I attended the Municipal South Ashford Health Services Committee. On the first and the third, I received Central Island Council CEOs and mayors for. I also did International Women's Day, and I must say, both the speakers were really, really good. That saves me, doesn't it? But they were, I mean, different contexts, different message, well, not different message, sort of same message, but a big difference.
Different levels.
Hmm. I did a presentation for a couple who had been married for fifty-five years, but that was very good, sitting down, talking to them for ten, fifteen minutes when everyone had left. It was quite nice, I enjoyed that. On Monday, I went to Warrnambool for a local government roundtable, and this was a meeting with our local member, Dantian, and the Deputy Prime Minister. And I must say that I was quite impressed with the Deputy Prime Minister. He seemed to be quite engaging and very down-to-earth. He did indicate that there's an extra 500 million to the drought relief, and that we should be looking at the pipeline to make sure that the state government gets in on time. Northern Grahamshire's already lobbying the minister on the matter, and we can do the same. The former minister that we're concerned about the time span, because I think it's about forty-five, it's about. The other, whilst it was about ten different councillors, the themes were roads, immigration, and he did indicate that there might be some announcements about targeted immigration to country areas. But he didn't commit any further than that. And the Western Highway again was raised as an important issue, but it was very good. In the afternoon, I went to the gym, before you all are. It was for a photo opportunity, the three young men who did sports academy, so that their training will be done here, they don't have to go, you know, hundreds of kilometres every day in round trips, so I was quite at home in the gym. And I made sure I had my picture taken on a side angle so it didn't look as bad as it could have. Now, I also had a meeting, and which is something that's going to happen in future here, in relation to one of the hall committees I'm on, and their application to upgrade their hall. So the Section 86 committee represented, being me, attended the council staff deliberations over budget and the like, and where it can fit in, and what the progress of the project is. In the past, the councillors sort of get it at the end, on this time I've been involved in the middle. So I think that's a good step forward and will happen in the future. I received notification that I've been appointed to the minister's advisory committee. There were three councillors from small councils nominated, selected, and three from city interface and large rural, it's hard to imagine, but John Holmes in the world, and the law and mayor, she gets, she says fifteen hours. Our first meeting is the third of April. The minister has set the agenda, and he sets the agenda, and he chairs the meetings, but he's seeing our inputs, so I'll see how it goes, and I'll report back. Can I just indicate that to circumvent any problems that might occur, I can now report on the fountain, the works along the way. I had been told previously that there's been difficulties with the construction, because when they looked at the one at Horsham, if you open it, you'll think, when they got here, it's solid concrete. So it's got a lot of work that has to be done that they did not, and that's slowed things down because they've had to get special tools. And the CEO will give a full report to council at the first briefing in April. But it is going on, it's just when they found that the opening wasn't open, makes it a bit difficult. And that's the end of my report. Any notice of motions? No? No urgent business? And there's a recommendation post-meet to do with a small amount of. Someone move that, councillor Braythwaite, councillor Dorwich, everybody in favor? Move that.